Meeting of Homewood School District 153 Board of Education for January 9th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mr. Booth?
Here.
Mrs. Marks?
Here.
Mrs. Bethay?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Present.
Mrs. Havilko?
Here.
Mr. Bosch?
Here.
Staff members present.
We have approval of minutes from the public hearing of December 12th, 2022, and the regular Board of Education meeting of December 12th, 2022. Are there any additions or corrections to either set of minutes? Is there a motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have future dates.
Yes, this coming Monday is Dr. Martin Luther King recognition, so we will be off that day. We are excited, though, that we'll be having a day of service. So just like we did last year, we are collecting goods for a new Respond Now and the Humane Society, and the James Hart Interact Club is kind of leading that effort. So people in the community can bring items to the James Hart front doors, bring those into the cafeteria, and last year we had a tremendous turnout of items that we were able to distribute to those three agencies. So we're excited to do that again. And then February 1st is an early dismissal day. So we just had a conference call today with Deep Equity, whom we're contracting with for our equity and inclusion work, and we have another half-day institute with them on February 1st. That's one of the activities for that day.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a couple presentations tonight. The first is National Board Certification Renewal.
Yes, we are very excited to recognize Laura Kozel this evening. So I'm going to ask her principal, Dr. Schnorr, if she could come forward and say a few words about Laura in terms of her recognition. Laura, we know you love being the center of attention, so we're gonna...
I'll keep it short and sweet, but very meaningful. Laura, as I was writing a letter of recognition to your trainer for revealing the message of two things, and I love learning them about you and I care more about you, but 25 years of teaching, 18 years of being here with all in special education, and you've been so committed and so dedicated to your craft, and we couldn't be more delighted and more fortunate to have you be a part of the Churchill team. You are a leader within our building, you are an incredible educator, your students are so lucky to have you, you are a representative on our building leadership team, you mentor new staff, and you have a student teacher, so of course you truly are a gift to us. So thank you very much. And of course, you received your National Board Certification, and you just recently recertified, and I loved being a part of that presentation that you had to do as part of that process. I learned a lot. So congratulations on this wonderful achievement. Myself, Dr. McAllister, would like to congratulate you. Thank you.
Laura, I just wanted to say a couple of things. Actually, for people who aren't aware, National Board Certification is the highest professional recognition we have in the teaching profession. It is an incredible amount of work to become nationally board certified, and Laura, you did that first in, when was your first? Five years ago. Right, right. So let's say 2018, Laura and a colleague, Marissa Alborn, received National Board Certification, and then Laura just recertified hers. So congratulations. Like I said, it is the highest honor we have in the teaching profession, so we're really proud of you. If we could get a picture, Shelley, you'd like to come up and get a picture? You get to hold that, Sarah?
That's the password for your name, so you don't forget that. It's not me. Somebody probably ate it. I have peppermint gum in my mouth, and that's all I can smell.
Ooh, that's flashy.
See flashes often these days?
Okay, and we have another presentation, our district office Jerry Morin Award winner.
Yes, so a few months ago, we recognized a Jerry Morin Award winner at each of our buildings, and the Jerry Morin Award is named after a former board member, Jerry Morin, who served for a couple of decades and was a board president. And so when he retired, he was recognized by naming this award after him. And again, internally, this is the highest award that we offer to our educators. So in October, we recognized a teacher and a support personnel from each building, and then this month, we're recognizing a district office award winner. And the way we do this in the district office is I ask all of the people who are in the district office, which is about 30 people, to nominate individuals. We narrow that pool down to our top candidates, and then we vote again on our winner. And I'm really excited to let everybody know that Catherine Zarniki is the district office award winner this year. And I will also point out that this is not the first time Catherine has been recognized as a Morin Award winner. She actually received this award when she was on staff at James Hart as a teacher. So it just goes to show, when you're excellent, you continue to do great work, and Catherine has built upon her teaching career and continues to do great things. So to speak a little more about her, I'm going to ask that Kathy Shafline, our Director of Curriculum, come up and say a few words about Catherine. Perfect.
But I want to tell you all a little bit about Catherine that you may or may not know. You know she was a student here in Homewood School District, so she's one of our own, and we're so happy she stuck with us. She did have a short stint in Kentucky, but we forgave that, she came back eventually. And as Scott said, she's won the Jerry Morin Award as a teacher. What year is that? So that was RTI, whatever year you started.
2013 or 14?
Something like that. And part of the reason she won that award, and that award was given as a James Hart staff award, was because of her drive as a math interventionist and RTI coordinator. She worked then with the other RTI coordinators in the district. She didn't just keep it to James Hart School. She was sharing all the way from the beginning her drive of UC data-driven instruction. She helped all of the buildings in the district get on the same page with universal screening using the Star Screener, and she really coordinated with the other RTI coordinators at the other schools in the district. And for that, she also went on to those who excel on the board along with the other RTI coordinators, and she was recognized for that. But now, she's part of the district's office team, and her expertise gets to table-holding level, because she gets to share with teachers across all of the districts. All of the math teachers she gets to work with as math instructional coach, and we like to call her the data diva of our office. She really has taken data even to another level. She brought a new program called Forefront that we're using to really look at the standards. As a math instructional coach, she really knows math at every grade level, the standards required in progression. She spent a lot of time working with not only intervention students, but our accelerated math students, and how can we accelerate them even more, but not too fast, to make sure that they get all that they need. She spends time, when we talk about accelerating the student, not just talking with the teachers, not just looking at the data, but then pulling up the results from their data and giving the kids individual packets of skills that they needed to work on if they wanted to go even higher. And she meets with the parents and talks to them about what you can do to help them. So that's much more than any interventionist, coordinator, instructional coach, or data diva. I can't tell you what a wonderful person she is to work with. I am proud and privileged to help and work with you, to call you my colleague and my friend, and it's my honor to be able to be up here with you to present the Jerry Morin Award.
We do, yes, don't go anywhere, Catherine.
Don't go away. You can stay wherever. Our secretary does, yeah.
Whereas Catherine Zarniki has successfully served in a variety of capacities within our district, including math teacher, mathematics interventionist, school RTI coordinator, and now district mathematics instructional coach and data coordinator, and regularly goes above and beyond her official role to help staff, students, and families. And whereas Catherine Zarniki consistently demonstrates her strong work ethic and follow-through as leader of the district math committee, her expertise was evident as she led the process of adopting a new math curriculum through research, piloting, and implementation. And whereas Catherine Zarniki's knowledge of best practice in mathematics standards, instruction, and intervention is second to none. She frequently comes in early and stays late to coach teachers on instructional strategies, engagement structures, and differentiation techniques to meet the needs of all students. And whereas Catherine Zarniki is the first person that teachers and administrators turn to for data analysis, use of spreadsheets, and using assessment to drive instruction because of her organization and attention to detail. And whereas Catherine Zarniki has the respect of everyone in the district, including administrators, teachers, and support staff. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Homewood Elementary School District 153 hereby recognizes Catherine Zarniki for her energy and dedication to students, staff, parents, and community members.
And I'm hoping that this is the only repeat championship tonight. And as always, you all are welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but our feelings won't be hurt if you have somewhere you would rather be.
Congratulations, Catherine.
Congratulations, thank you.
Nice to see all of you, thank you for coming. Laura, congratulations.
Is there a motion to accept the resolution?
So moved.
Catherine, I have something for you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving along. We'll wait one second for Scott to get back. Our next presentation is about our strategic plan update. Dr. McAllister?
Yes, let me get this queued up, and you can see it on the screen. You also have it in your board packets, but... There we go. I'll see if I can...
All right, well, thank you. I wanted to update you on our strategic plan, which was created in 2018, believe it or not, it's been five years. But we sat down, all of you were on the board at that time, and then many staff members, community members, a group of about 55 people, put together the strategic plan. And our idea was to annually revisit those goals, see how we're doing, and then in 2023, we would set about creating a new strategic plan. I'm excited to tell you that we have made good progress on the goals that we established in 2018, and I'm going to share a little bit about that with you this evening. And also, as you're aware, we are embarking on a new strategic plan, actually starting at the end of this month, as we're going to meet with our facilitator, Dr. Mendoian, who led our last strategic plan. So we're excited about that, and with the help of the administrative team, we looked at these, and again, I just wanted to give you a brief idea of where we are, even though obviously we endured the pandemic, we still made good progress in our goals. So the six areas that the group identified in 2018 were finance, facilities, human resources, social emotional well-being, community and public relations, and curriculum and assessment. And so I'll just go through each of these and briefly touch on a few highlights. First of all, in terms of finance, one of the things that we had set about as a goal was to mitigate the structural deficit. And at the time, this had been really a decades-long problem for us of not receiving enough revenue from local sources and state funding, so that we're in this perpetual cycle of deficit spending. And we are obviously really, really excited to let you know that on number eight, through your efforts and that of our citizens for Homewood Schools, we're able to successfully pass a referendum, which not only will provide us with an injection of money, but a long-term revenue stream that will finally put an end to our deficit spending. So that's definitely a highlight of our strategic plan. We've also, again, attempted to work with local government in terms of collecting some sales tax revenue. As you're aware, it was unsuccessful in terms of the home rule initiative, but we certainly did try that, and we're always looking for ways to get additional revenue, because again, we're not getting money from the casino. We get very little in terms of property tax from a lot of the development you see due to TIPS. So we go about our own ways trying to raise revenue, but we're not going to stop trying to find revenue in other areas. And then, of course, just managing costs. You know, Dr. Gibson, who again is retiring this year, and we're in the process right now in searching for his replacement. One of the things that he did was a budget prioritization system. So when the administrators, the principals sit down to create budgets, they are asked to prioritize areas of spending. That was something that we've done in the last five years. And then just generally looking at student data to see where are our needs and staff accordingly. And obviously, enrichment and intervention work is expensive, it costs a lot of money because it's people, but it's also very important. So we look at our data in terms of funding resources. This is an updated revenue and expense chart, which you have seen many times over the years. And one of the things that I want to make sure that you see on this one, for years we talked about, and this winner isn't working on that screen, it disappears, for years we talked about this 25% minimum fund balance, which is what the state asks that we have in a rainy day fund, and unfortunately, you can see here, over time, our fund balance dips below that 25%. And so here we are in fiscal year 23, where we're below what the state would recommend, and without the referendum that we recently received, that trend would have continued. And as you can see, with the successful referendum, the green bar, which represents local tax revenue, there will be a market jump starting in fiscal year 24, which causes the overall revenue bar to now exceed the gray mountain here, and the gray mountain represents our expenses. So the good news is, moving forward, under our current revenue expenditure forecasting, our revenues exceed our expenses. So the deficit that I had mentioned before, again, will be going away. Any questions on finance? Okay, secondary, facilities. You know, we just want to make sure that our physical spaces are sufficient. We had in the past five years, architectural, our architects, White Company, came in and did utilization studies, and they looked at our buildings, they looked at the square footage, and they made recommendations on what we need given our enrollment. Now, one nice thing for us is our enrollment has been consistent. You know, there's some parts of the state where enrollment is falling, there's other parts where enrollment is climbing rapidly. We've had pretty consistent enrollment, so that's helpful, but it certainly isn't the only part of the equation when it comes to staffing. Again, with Dr. Gibson's help and Kevin Keen and Paul Klumcheck, we have a five-year facilities plan, where we're trying to look at what our needs are and will be down the road, not only maintenance-wise, but in terms of new facility needs that we may have. And then in terms of the work that's currently taking place, as you know, last year you approved $9.2 million to get new HVAC. COVID really brought to light that we needed fresh ventilation, so we have new units in many of our classrooms, about two-thirds of our classrooms, and the other ones that were not replaced were newer, are new. And we also have added two classrooms, and we're really excited. This morning, I went over to Churchill, and for the first time, the addition is open. So they told us months and months and months ago that it would be ready on January 9th, and of course, we all know in the construction world, when they tell you January 9th, it means April 9th. So Sarah and I have been watching this thing all along, and sure enough, January 9th, it's ready. So it's not going to be fully utilized, we still have furniture that is outstanding that we're waiting on. We got an inspection today from the regional office, so they have approved us for partial capacity at this time, while they're still doing some checklist items. But we're in a good place, and it is a beautiful addition to Churchill School, and provides a much-needed relief on the space that they have over there. But you're also aware, we still have locals at Willow School and Churchill School. We just added the Willow one, and again, Melissa, who's in church behind me. It has provided great relief to them, and I'm not exaggerating when I say they had interventions being taught in the hallways, they had library time in the hallways, and that's no longer the case. But our goal would be to not have those on a permanent basis, right? What can we do is we start to create this new strategic plan to relieve some of the problems we have with congestion, and ultimately get those locals out of here where we have some permanent spaces of replacement. Any questions on facilities? Human resources, obviously to promote a positive culture, to ensure strong relationships. One of the things that we've always taken pride on is the relationships that we have within our staff, administrative to teachers, to assistants, et cetera, and also with our families. And so that's still a big priority for us, is to have a place that people want to come to work. In education, it is becoming more and more challenging to find good people. And so I think one of the things, you know, so long as you're being competitive with salary and compensation, which we are, you know, one of the deciding factors is going to be things like culture. So it's really important to us that we have a positive culture. We do climate surveys, we'll continue to do that, and district leadership team, that's what DLT represents, I meet with that group three to four times a year, and really it's about having a group of people that meet, representing all of our buildings and district offices, to have any conversations about what we can do to improve culture and climate here. And then our goal to diversify our staff, again, it's a challenge in education to find high-quality candidates regardless of color, but when you throw that in as a variable, and our desire to have a staff that reflects our student body, it is even more challenging. So we are in competition with other districts to find great, great minority candidates to come work in Homewood Schools. And I'm excited to say, some of the things that we've done the last five years, including Laura Kozel was just here, so Nikki Kerr has really worked hard to establish relationships with our local universities, including Governor State. We have 18 first-year teachers, and these are people just entering the teaching profession. And part of what you do as a freshman or sophomore is you go into classrooms and you just sit and watch, you're not teaching, you're just observing. So we have partnered with Governor State to get those brand-new people in education to come into our buildings, and hopefully you kind of land the book that way, that one year, one day down the road, anybody will want to student teach with us, B, assuming they're a high-quality person, want to work for us. So we're excited to establish that relationship. We've also worked with Roosevelt University. The state is offering more and more alternative certification programs, trying to get creative, essentially, in how we get people into the profession. And as one example, we have people who are currently assistants also working as classroom teachers under this alternative certification program. It requires a lot of mentoring, both internally and from the university, but this is one of the things that the state has approved and that we're taking advantage of in terms of filling some of our shortages. And then I provided a little bit of data, just so you can see that we are making inroads in terms of diversifying our staff. You know, it's not just saying we want to diversify our staff, the numbers show that we've done a good job of bringing in more and more people of color, professionals of color, into our staff. So dating back five years ago, 18% of the new teachers we hired were other than white, and those numbers have crept up from 34 to 36 to 39. And then last year, the most recent class that we brought in, 41% of our staff was minority. Of course, the key is keeping them, right? And our data shows that of the people who have left, and again, we're tracking this now, we're having exit interviews, why are people leaving? Most often, the reasons people are leaving us are physical proximity, the drive, wherever they live, it's too far to commute from there, unfortunately, we can't pick up our buildings and move to where they are. So we understand that. And then, of course, salary, we need to be competitive with salary. We will be negotiating again, starting next year, and so that's one of the things that we'll have to have conversations about, is making sure that we are competitive with the compensation we provide. But most of the staff who are leaving us are not our minority staff, so that is also good, that we're bringing those individuals in and we're keeping them there. Any questions on human resources?
I think that's, yeah, I just want to say that, you know, for someone who's in this space in the private sector, that's a great trend, right? Ultimately, that's the front door to the barn, it's just the retention, the back door. So, but this is tremendous progress. I think I've been on the board five years, and since I've been on the board, I've seen intentional effort, and it's showing off here, so that's great.
Yeah, thank you. And I truly believe that once people come into our district, they become our best ambassadors. So if we can get people to come into our district and say, this is a great place to work, and most of the staff we hire, again, we have data to show you this, and I'm happy to share that, most of the staff we hire is coming from adjacent districts. They're not coming from out of state, they're not coming from Chicago, but we do get some from Chicago, but most of the people that we hire are coming from adjacent districts, and it's often word of mouth. So if we can get our brand-new staff to go out and sell the district, that's going to work towards a launch in the future. In terms of social and emotional well-being, again, you hear so much about mental health issues, I just saw an article today that was shared with me, some school district is actually suing the technology companies for causing social and emotional distress in our students. Making that connection may be tough for them in the quarter of fall, but nonetheless, we certainly know our kids are having challenges in this area, and they're not becoming smaller, they're becoming bigger, and of course, the pandemic played a large role in that as well. So we feel good about where we are this year relative to last year, and I do feel a sense of normalcy in our principals, I think, whatever the fact that our buildings are calmer places than they were 12 months ago. But nonetheless, this is still a huge area of importance for us. Many of you work in education, and I see you nodding your heads, right? Like, this is a problem, not only in Homewood School District 153. But one of the things that we do, of course, is we devote a lot of resources in terms of trying to address this. So we have an SEL program in all of our buildings that was adopted in the last five years. We employ two social workers and a school psychologist in each building. Not a lot of districts can say that they devote human resources in this area to that degree, so it's something that we not only talk about being important, but what we make it important by hiring qualified people. And again, PBIS continues to be an important cornerstone, but the lessons we teach our kids, starting all the way from the moment they enter Homewood School, right? What it means to be a good human being as well as a good student. Any questions on SEL? Community public relations, continue to try to find ways to engage with our community this year in August. Many of you remember, I think, that picture, that picture of Laura, right? Is from our back-to-school event this year, which we held out here in the sports complex parking lot, at many local vendors, and that's something that we would like to continue to do, to build that welcoming feeling with our district. And then just finding new ways, again, to encourage families who are new to Homewood. So many of our families, of course, are here from Willow all the way up through James Hart, but many people aren't, right? They move here, maybe specifically for the school district, and we want to make sure that they feel welcome, knowing that they're going to integrate to a great high school. But we want to make sure that those families are welcome. So we created a welcome packet, and continue to find ways to reach out to them. On our website, you can find videos under each of our school links that were created in the past five years. And Shelley Peck, who's right now recording this presentation, Shelley led our website redesign in terms of some of the heartwarming, such as the graphics that you see here. So all of these are things that have happened in the last five years to try to reach out to our families. to our families and become more engaged with them. And then finally, in terms of curriculum assessment, a big thing that we talked for years about becoming one-to-one, and overnight, we had to. And I guess there's nothing like jumping into the wall.
Forced into that.
It would be, but no doubt, it was a Herculean effort for Beth White and her team, but we did it, and we're certainly better off today for it. So it's exciting for us to now have devices with all of our students. Obviously, that requires network and more people to be able to service those devices. But technology has become a major part of education in the 21st century. And then, of course, training. Beth does a wonderful job, Kat does a wonderful job, and our administrative team will be talking this week and day to day about our future professional development, not only this year, but down the road, in terms of making sure our staff is using the latest trends in education. And then, of course, trying to help our parents help their kids, right? It's one thing for us, is train professionals to be able to help our kids, but the more we can get our parents to be able to understand that and be able to engage their kids at home, the better off for all of us. So that is, again, a brief overview of kind of the six areas that we identified in 2018 and the progress we've made. It will be interesting as we work with Dr. Madoon, and each of you, I believe, received an email, and all of our administrators received an email from him. And the first step of that is what you just saw, right? What are our core values? What do we believe in? And from there, that's kind of going to set the path, okay, what do we need to do to address those core values? So he replied in his email, and that will get the ball rolling on January 30, and then we'll be sitting down with him. The administrative team will be sitting down with him. So I'm excited about creating the next strategic plan. Any closing questions?
I do have one comment. This plan was covered two years where all of our attention was focused on how to survive teaching in a pandemic. And yet, we still made incredible progress on all of these goals. And I think that that's amazing. We could have just said, that's it, just tread water, let's just manage, manage what we have to. But instead, we not only managed what we had to, but continued to find ways to improve and to get better and to meet the goals that we set for ourselves. So well done to the entire staff.
Thank you. Yeah, it's obvious, whatever you see here, but the great majority of people aren't.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just a couple of comments. You know, as I looked through the presentation before the meeting, and then, once again, you know, hearing what Dr. McCall started to say, one of the things that, you know, I reflected on is when we put this strategic plan together five years ago, I thought that it was very aggressive and very ambitious. And I was thinking to myself, how are we going to get from where we are to where we want to be in five years? And surprisingly and miraculously, we, we being the community, faculty, staff, students, parents, everyone involved, got there. Do we have more work to do? Sure. But I think we've, to me, it's, at least in my opinion, seems like we've made really good headway in moving in the direction that we want to go as a district, and that the folks who were engaged and involved in our strategic plan thought that the district should go too. So again, to reiterate what Shelley said, I mean, kudos to everybody who was involved in getting from 2018 to 2023, especially given some of the challenges over the last few years. I mean, it was, it's, guys, everyone moved mountains, I guess, you know, to use a cliche. So that's my thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, let's move along. Anyone in the audience come to address the board on any items that are not on tonight's And we do not have any responses because we do previous questions or concerns, because we have not had any raised. Any board members have any reports?
I have a report for EdProgress. EdProgress, we've met a couple of times, and we're going to be meeting, I believe, again in two weeks to have our final meeting regarding our policy manual, which has taken a lot of time and effort to get that done. But we've gotten it done, and we've made a lot of great progress. So I just want to say thank you to Kathy Shafain, Alex Bosch, and Jim Schmidt, for all of us, and Dr. McAllister for putting in all the hard work to get that done. So we will, after we meet, we'll present it to the board, and then it will be available for viewing once approved.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Superintendent's report.
Yes, just a few items. As I mentioned this morning, the addition at Churchill, very excited that that is officially open, and we'll, you know, we'll have that open to the public once it's up and going for sure. But as I've talked to Sarah, you know, her plan is to get that fully functional and used as a classroom in the fall. It's going to be used this spring, but it's tough mid-year to start moving classrooms all around. So we're excited to be able to utilize that for enrichment and intervention over the next few months. And then in earnest, it becomes a true third-gig classroom in the fall. Over winter break, the pipes in the Willow basement, you remember one year ago when that thing burst, and we had great pictures of corroded pipes, not great, but realistic. This past two weeks, basically Willow was shut down as they completed that work in the basement, replacing the most decrepit pipes. So we're excited that that problem of immediate need has been addressed, and obviously, we'll continue to keep an eye on the infrastructure there. And then, on tonight's agenda, upcoming, but I wanted to make a special mention of it. One of these little things that means a lot to teachers and makes a big impact on their classroom and their ability to teach is something as simple as window treatments, right? So we look at these window treatments, and I don't know, having been in this room at 8:00 AM when the sun is right there beating in, it's very difficult. Like, that presentation you just saw would not have been possible at 8:00 AM because you have the sun coming through, and many of our teachers face that as well. And with window treatments that over time, you know what it's like in your house, they just stopped working as well as they could. So for years and years, our staff have asked for new window treatments. And again, with the money that this board approved last summer for the work that was taking place now, and will continue into next summer, the summer of '23, we are excited to present a bid to you this evening for approval for window treatments. So it's not inexpensive when you're talking three buildings and literally hundreds of spaces, but it's really, really important. And again, it's not a glamour item, but it makes a huge impact to our staff. So we're excited to be able to address the window treatments once and for all. That's it.
Great. Thank you. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. Our first item is personnel.
Yes, you can see a couple of resignations, and it's always sad when people leave us, but there's a variety of reasons. And I just wanted to make special mention, Kelly Cassidy is an assistant at Willow School and just does a fabulous job. Kelly has an opportunity to become a classroom teacher with Easter Seals. So we're excited for her, disappointed to lose her, but excited for Kelly as she pursues that venture. And then one of our school psychs is going to be working closer to home as well. And then again, some leaves that happen on a regular basis, but I wish Kelly and Bridget the best of luck.
Any questions on the personnel report?
No.
All right. We also need to authorize the chief school business official to pay the usual and customary bills for February 2023. Any questions on that? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented in items 7A and 7B.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Buthay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havicore?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have a couple action agenda items. The first is the second payment of December 2022 bills and the first payment of January 2023 bills. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the chief school business official at the Board of Education authorize the second payment of December 2022 bills and the first payment of January 2023 bills in an amount not to exceed $3,44,842.95.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Buthay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havicore?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
All eyes.
Motion carries. We have employment.
I know this is employment, but as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking of all the great things we're doing. When we leave this evening, we need to go on a field trip to the James Hart office, so you can see the brand-new James Hart office. You won't recognize it when you walk in, and I'm being serious when I say that. So it's been redesigned, new floors, which now match what Churchill and Willow have. But more importantly, the reason we did this was we went from two secretaries in that space to three. Ann Sneddon had been working in the old Millennium Office, the CIA Office, and she is now in the James Hart office. So we have three bodies in a space that was designed for two, and it just was not, it just didn't work, the traffic flow. So it's been redesigned, so we'll stop by there on the way. So I just wanted to mention that. But in terms of employment, this is a great example. Natalie Stasiak is somebody who student-taught with us in the fall. And when we talk about, why do you want people to student- teach? Because they see what the culture and climate is in Homewood, and they want to remain. And Natalie has been very forthright with saying, I'd love to be here. And so this is an opportunity for us to hold on to a great candidate, so hiring her as a permanent substitute. Dr. Schnorr has been very pleased and speaks highly of her and is excited to add her to her staff for next year. And then Adrian Zabrano was filling in at Churchill and now will be in a full-time assistant capacity at Willow School, filling one of the vacancies that we had there. So we're excited to add Natalie and Adrian.
Great. Any questions? Is there a motion?
Moved upon the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education approve the employment of Natalie Stasiak and Adrian Zabrano effective January 9, 2023, upon the terms recommended by the superintendent, conditioned only upon receipt of a satisfactory criminal background report and upon receipt no later than January 28, 2023, of evidence of proper legal qualifications for the position to be filled.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Zinnerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Havicore?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Mrs. Buthay?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries. Are there any discussion items tonight?
No.
Is there any written communication to the board?
Oh, man.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thanks for coming tonight.